Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Next is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First is Item A, Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place on File All Notices Pertaining to This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place on File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. Item D, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on November 1st, 2021, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. E, Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the Amount of $554,873.67. Item F, Approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the Amount of $231,747.14. And G, Approval of Write-Off of Ambulance Bad Debts. Any item that a council member wants removed from the Consent Agenda. All right, and your vote, please.
I move that-
I'm sorry, Rick.
-the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
By Claybaugh, second by Morgan, that all items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved. Now your vote, please. And that is approved.
Turn yours off.
Eight to zero. Next is a Public Hearing. Public Hearing on the Acquisition of Real Property from Eileen E. Smith, described as follows: The south 50 feet, west 10 feet of Lot 8, and the south 50 feet of lots 9 through 12 inclusive, blocks 28, A.J. Cropseby's addition, Beatrice, Gage County, commonly known as 430 North Fifth Street, parcel number 011035000.
So, what we have here is a parcel of ground. Most people probably know this as Lou's Garden. If you go up to the post office, there it's on the corner between Fifth Street and Post Office Alley. Eileen Smith and her husband have owned it for a number of years. A couple of years ago, they removed the house that was on it and turned it into a garden area called Lou's Garden, obviously. I believe Mr. Smith has passed away here recently. Eileen has moved down with family. I believe either Florida or Texas, I don't remember off the top of my head which one. They're not able to take care of the property anymore. They had contacted the city, asked if we would be interested in acquiring the property. So the purchase price is $1,000 for us to acquire it. It is a buildable lot. You could build a house on it. At this point, we don't have any plans for the lot itself. We'll turn it over to the Public Properties Department and let those guys determine what's best for that lot as far as, is it flowers? Is it, you know, some type of garden like they have today? Is it turning over to grass and just mowing it moving forward? They'll take a look at it come spring and see what's best. But that's the opportunity we're presenting to you tonight.
Everybody knows where it's at? Okay. Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. Claybaugh.
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:03 PM.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:03 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Next is a public hearing to consider amending Section 706 of the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Beatrice, Ordinance Number 94-13, relating to residential fencing requirements.
So anytime we amend the zoning ordinance, it requires a public hearing both at Planning and Zoning and at City Council. Planning and zoning met earlier tonight. They recommended approval, so we bring them before you now. Essentially, what we are working to do with this ordinance is to clarify some issues with residential fencing, most notably with street-side yards. So if you have a corner lot, the direction your house faces is the front yard. The street that runs it on the side of your house is the street-side yard. And so, we've had some rules in place as far as how far out you can build your fence on the street-side yard, and so we just wanted to make sure those are clarified and a little more clear and easier to understand. Essentially, you can build it out. If you read through here, they can be up to six feet high. They can have 50% enclosure so long as it has a number of things that have to meet. The fence does not extend towards the street further than the front face of an existing single-family residence on the same block. So we're going to look at other houses on your block and see how far out they sit to see how far your fence can go. If you don't have another house on your block that faces that direction, we look at adjacent blocks and see how far out a house already sits. If there's nothing there, then the default rule is the engineer, community development director, and myself will walk out to your house and try to see what makes sense for the neighborhood. Still can't interfere with the site triangle if that rule stills in place. You know, we want to make sure it doesn't impact somebody trying to back out of their driveway. And then ultimately, if it's placed into the city right-of-way, we do have property owners sign a fence permit, which puts them on notice that your fence is being built on city property. It can be removed if the city needs to for any reason, and then we file that to the Registered Deeds Office. So not only are you on notice, but all future owners or purchasers of your house are also put on notice moving forward. So, that is the proposal before you.
Anyone? Mr. Claybaugh.
I move that public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Next is Resolution Number 6794, Executing the Contract for Sale of Real Estate and All Necessary Documents to Acquire Real Estate from Eileen E. Smith.
I move that Resolution Number 6794 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6794 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
Again, just note, purchase price is $1,000. Closing will happen, I don't know if it's December or January, but as soon as we can kind of get some title insurance done and a few things buttoned up that way, we'll close on the property.
Public properties will maintain it and find out the best need for it, maybe continue it as a garden of some type?
Right, that certainly is a possibility, but they'll kind of wait till maybe spring and see what happens.
Any comments from the audience? All right, and your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6794 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6795, Executing an Addendum to Contract of Donation of Real Estate from Leonard C. Gowen and Maxine I. Gowen to amend the legal description and closing date in said contract and to add a provision concerning asbestos inspection and removal.
I move that Resolution Number 6795 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6795 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
We previously had an agreement with the Gowens to acquire part of their property at 914 South H Street. There are two houses there, one that they live in, one that has become in need of, in a state of disrepair, it needs to be demolished. And so they were agreeing to donate us that one. The previous agreement we had said that the legal description would be determined when we did an administrative subdivision. That is working through its process, so that's why you're changing the legal description, just because now you have some clarification as to that. Outside of that, the agreement previously had a closing date that we are not going to meet, and so we're looking to push closing date back again, just as we work through some of these things to clean it up. And also, you'll note in the addendum, the Gowens give us permission to go in and start doing asbestos inspections, so we can package it with some other houses, so it's ready for demolition and allow the city to save some costs that way.
Questions? Rich?
Who's going to be paying the fit's got asbestos? Who's going to pay for the asbestos removal?
City will.
Attending, we will?
Yes.
Are we close to a package deal? Are they tearing others down?
Yes.
Any other questions from the audience? Mr. Nelson?
Just one other topic. I represent the Gowens, Jim Nelson, 1025 North Sixth Street. There is one addendum, part of the addendum is that there's a leaseback of $1 per year for up to 25 years. The original agreement was for that they would donate the west half of that lot, and then the city determined that we couldn't do a lot split. So now we're going to donate basically all of Lot 17 with the reservation, and they're going to pay the city to take the property. So, you guys will save a little bit of money because you don't have to do the landfill Hopefully that answers your question, Rich.
Another question. This dollar lease, if and when, heaven forbid, years from now, Max and Leonard pass away, does that go to the next property owner?
It's a maximum of 25 years.
Yes, but they're both-
So it would for up to 25 years if they pay the dollar per year. What I'm telling the Gowens is, pay the $25 upfront.
Okay.
But that's the part that we added to it. There's a leaseback. They maintain the property, they mow it, so the city doesn't have to come out and mow it, but the city maintains the sidewalk.
Any other questions?
Sounds fair.
Thanks, James. Any other discussion? And your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6795 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6796, Executing the Letter of Agreement for Professional Services Between the City and Olson Incorporated to Undertake an Evaluation of the Grit Handling System at the Wastewater Treatment Facility as Recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that Resolution Number 6796 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6796 be passed and adopted.
We've been making upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility. We just are completing the biosolids, if you will, that last step of the process down there. The next one we want to address is the grit removal system. When you think of grit removal, it is the sand that comes through or the inorganic material. We want to remove those from the process before you send it through the plant. Doing so allows the plant to run more efficiently and also causes less wear and tear on the plant. And so, what you have before you tonight is an agreement to hire Olsons to come in and start to evaluate our current grit handling system and to make recommendations for a modified or a new grit removal system. And then, in another year or so is when you'd start to look to implement those improvements to that facility. All of these, again, we continue to make improvements to the facility on the outside or ancillary items that you need for the plant, and then if and when we need to upgrade the entire plant, that portion, that new processing system would go into the middle, and all of these systems would still continue to work and operate.
Anyone from the audience? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6796 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6797, Executing the Letter of Agreement for Professional Services Between the City and Olson Incorporated to Undertake an Evaluation of Lift Station Number One and Number Five as Recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that Resolution Number 6797 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6797 be passed and adopted.
So we have nine lift stations. Lift station number one is located approximately first in Market Street. It's the main lift station in town. We have lift station number five, which is located at about Second and Herbert Street. So if you're on Second Street heading into the Glenover area, just as you grow over the bridge, it's right there on the right-hand side. That one handles all of the flow coming out of the industrial park. So those are the two, that's why we picked those two to start with. What we want to do is go and evaluate these two lift stations. We want to make sure that the pumps are adequately sized. We want to make sure all the pipes and valves inside are adequately sized. What we'd ultimately like to get to is they have the same pump in all of the lift stations, so if you have a pump goes bad, we can have a spare and go and replace it and make some improvements. We will look at the SCADA system. Right now, we can't tell which pumps are operating from the plant, we can't tell how efficiently they're operating. We actually go onsite to tell that. We want to put system in place so you can tell when sitting in the plant or ultimately pull it up on a phone or an iPad someplace and be able to tell how the system is running. And so that's why we're looking to retain Olsons to help start to evaluate those lift stations.
Can you, for the people sitting here and the people that will watch this, why don't you explain to them what a lift station is?
Sure.
We talk about it all the time. Everybody here knows, but can you give them the Reader's Digest version of it?
Absolutely. So the short version is, it only runs downhill, right? And so when it finally gets to the bottom of a hill, you have to pump the sewage back up to the next hill or through the next valley. So that's what you do. Everything in the industrial park runs down to lift station number five, it's by the creek, right? So the creek is the low spot in that area. You have the lift station which then pumps the sewage back to the next lift station, which is lift station number one. But that's what they're designed to do, is continue to move the sewage throughout the community. Obviously, if one breaks down or doesn't work, guess what happens? It starts to back up. And if it backs up long enough, then it backs up into people's houses and businesses, and then we get phone calls and people are unhappy. And so that's why we want to make sure those things are always up and running and as efficient as possible.
How old are these stations?
Oh, you know, these lift stations have all probably been in place for, I would guess, 60, 70 years, I mean, as long as your system's been there. I mean, as long as you've had houses in Glenover, you would have had to have a lift station otherwise you wouldn't have gotten it past Indian Creek. So, they're quite old. That's why you want to go make sure that you continually upgrade the pumps and doing those things. If anybody drove by lift station five and said, "Well, you just did a bunch of work there." What's this? Well, what you did there is you simply took the controls that run it, and instead of being down in the wet well, you removed them and made them up so that now they're higher than the 100-year flood. So if a flood occurs, they're now at least out of there. Now we want to go back and say, okay, what do we need for real controls here?
But over the last 15 years, we have increased the size of the pumps and replaced it. The pumps in the lift stations aren't 60 years old.
No, nope, nope, they're right. They're sized right. We just, we have some of different brands, and so we want to start seeing what makes sense. We want to make sure that they all work. Again, they all have two pumps in them, so if one goes down, there's a backup one ready to run. But when you take the one that broke out, now you're down to one pump, and that's why we want to try to make sure we have some redundancy built in the system so we can handle those issues if and when they do occur.
From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6797 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6798, Executing the Letter of Agreement for Professional Services Between the City and Olson Incorporated to Develop a Model of the City's Wastewater System as Recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that Resolution Number 6798 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that Resolution 6798 be passed and adopted.
What we want to do here is, just like it says, we want to make a model of our wastewater system. We have one of the water system, so if we have a new industry come to town, we can plug it into that model, and Steve Kelly can immediately tell you what the water pressure will be at that place, what impact it'll have on surrounding fire hydrants. If we need to take a line out of service, we know how we can feed the rest of the system. We do not have that today for our wastewater system. And so, if I have a new prospect come to community and they want to be placed out in the industrial park, I can tell you, and James can tell you, whether or not the plant can handle it, we have enough capacity at the plant, but right now, we can't tell you between the plant and the business whether or not our system is adequately sized to get it there. And that's what this system would allow us to do, is have that model, be able to plug in those what-ifs. Hey, if houses develop in this area, or how big of an area can you continue to expand before you need to upsize that lift station? Or the next time you go in and you start making modifications to a lift station, let's look and see, okay, in the future, how far out do we think we'll build? What do we need to do to kind of oversize it today so we don't have to rebuild again in five, 10, 15 years from now? That's what this model allows to do, and so that's why we'd like to have that one completed.
We've also used this in the past when we've had an industrial prospect or something like that, that we didn't have to scramble and try to figure all this out, we had that information on hand, so.
That's really important for Engage also.
Yes.
That we've got that information as we're meeting with these individuals, as opposed to saying, "We'll get back with you in a couple of weeks."
Or months.
Or months. It's important to have it right at our fingertips at the time. Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Resolution Number 6798 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6799, Executing the Union Contract with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 84.
I move that Resolution Number 6799 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Frayland, that Resolution 6799 be passed and adopted.
All right, so let's start with, who does the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 84 represent? That would be your police officers, your police sergeants, and your dispatchers. So those three fall under the FOP contract. Again, when we're dealing with a union like this, we have to look at comparabilities. We're looking at towns half our size to twice our size. You look geographically, so you start with those closest and you move yourself outward. And then we start to look at wages, we're looking at health insurance, and we're looking at the value of retirement. And you're coming up with an HRV, is what that value, all those together, comes up with for an hourly rate. Then we compare our number to those surrounding communities, you got to be between 98 and 102% is where you try to be at for comparability wise. So saying that, we did that with all three of those different departments, those positions. Each one has their own separate array, so we're looking through those. What we found is we were a little under on all three of them, and so we needed to make some adjustments. We also looked at what other communities were doing for pay raises, so we knew that if we wanted to sign a three-year contract, we don't want to fall behind and have to make that up again in three years, and we kind of stayed in there where other communities are at as well. And so what we have proposed before you tonight is a three-year contract that calls for a 4% increase each year of the contract. It also adds one personal day to the contract. Where we got to that one, again, we looked at that array, we saw what other communities did, and we saw in the array, not only was a personal holiday the mode, so it was more common than not, when you looked at what the average number of personal days was, it came out to be one. And so that's why, again, under CIR, to be comparable, we added a personal holiday to their contract.
Where does that set us percentage-wise then?
It's tough to say, but you're going to be right around about 100%, you know, kind of in that ballpark. And again, it's kind of a moving target, because Skyler settled, then York settles, and then somebody else settles, and so it's kind of always moving, but we're going to be right in that area.
Gary?
When we took on Richardson County and we do Crete dispatching, does that throw our dispatchers into a different array?
No, the odd part about the array, it doesn't matter how many calls for service a dispatcher takes. It doesn't matter how many runs a firefighter takes. All it says is, are you a dispatcher in a city the size of 12,000 people? Which, again, what our dispatchers do is more likely more work than a lot of other dispatchers out there do, and so that's an argument you hear from them, but it's not taken in consideration. The difficult part you have with dispatchers is finding other communities our size that have dispatch centers. And so then you start looking at like Stewart County. It's a regional dispatch center like ours, and so you try to look at that and see what they're paying their employees, but that's kind of the difficult part when it comes to dispatchers.
Any other questions? From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 6799 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to amend Section 706(c) of the Zoning Ordinance, City of Beatrice, Ordinance Number 94-13, relating to residential fences.
I move that said ordinance be given number 2152. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given number 21-52, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Resolution 21-52 by number the first time, resolution 21-52 by number the second time, and resolution 21-52 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 21-52 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance 21-52 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed? The audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance Number, beg your pardon, yeah, ordinance Number 21-52 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to establish salaries and compensation for various city and Board of Public Works non-union employees.
I move that said ordinance be given number 21-53. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance be given number 21-53, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance Number 21-53 by number the first time, ordinance 21-53 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 21-53 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 21-53 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that ordinance 21-53 be passed and approved.
We're required to publish salaries once a year. Generally, what we do is we do one salary ordinance that has both union and non-union employees on the same one. However, due to the result, due to the fact that the union employees haven't all signed their contracts yet, we want to move forward the non-union salary ordinance, so we can go ahead and move those raises forward while we continue to work on the union employees. And once all the unions have signed, we'll bring forward a unionized salary ordinance at that point. So, next question you probably have is, who are non-union employees? Right now, your biggest non-union employees would be your department heads and the employees at Mars. All the employees at Mars are not unionized at this point, and so those are the two biggest populations of non-union employees that we have. Unlike the union employees that we just went through with the FOP and having comparability and going through all that stuff, non-unions don't have that, they don't have bargaining power, so we've not been sitting down negotiating with them. But we have proposed before you tonight as a 3.5% increase. It's a one-year, it's not really an agreement, it's just a salary ordinance, it's good for a year, so it's 3.5% is what we've proposed for the non-union employees.
When does all that take effect?
October 1st.
Toby? Do we do merit raises anymore?
Yes, we do.
I just haven't seen them come up before.
Performance-based raises don't come before the council?
Well, I was going to say, they used to, I don't know if they do anymore or not.
No, we haven't brought a performance-based raise before the council in at least a decade plus.
That's why I ask you, because of-
Sorry.
You had a councilman that, you had someone on the council that wanted that to put his thumb on all that.
Oh, I remember that now.
There you go.
Yeah, I do.
Any other questions? From the audience? All right, and your vote, please. And that is approved, eight to zero. Ordinance Number 21-53 has been passed and adopted. Next is the Public Forum. Purpose of the Public Forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the City Council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the City Council at this time. Is there anyone here for the Public Forum?
He's getting paid to be here. He can wait.
If you guys have my address, you can send me a check, I'm here every week anyway. Ashley Mason, 1300 Lincoln Street. Last night at the annual fundraiser for the local nonprofit organization, the Willow Center, I noticed that none of you had been invited to come and learn more about this amazing resource here in Beatrice. So tonight, I've come to provide you with information about the Crisis Pregnancy Resource Center. I hope to see each of you at next year's event.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Bruce Lang, Chief of Police. Many of you already probably know, but I just wanted to formally announce to you that effective June of '22, I will be retiring, shy of 30 years, with the City of Beatrice. So, we'll provide any assistance I can with the hiring process and give us plenty of time to do that, so nobody has to rush, but I want to let everybody know. The gray hair probably creates that, but a lot of people say, "When are you going to retire?" Well, now, and I'll have to look at him and go, "Well, I'm not sure," because now I am, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Anyone else for the Public Forum? Next is the City Administrator's Monthly Report. Tobias?
A couple of highlights, and then happy to answer any questions anybody has. One is our civic-ready notification system. This is a notification system that we are working to unveil here shortly that will This is a notification system that we are working to unveil here shortly, that'll allow the public to sign up and receive text messages from the city for a variety of things, you know, it might be when your BPW bill is due, it might be when you have a question of whether or not on Veterans Day is the city going to pick up your garbage? By the way, the answer is yes, but that was a question that was very common the other day, if we could have this notification system, be able to get that information out to people. But you'll start seeing an opportunity to sign up through our social media or our website here very soon, and we'll have that information, and ask for people to sign up and take advantage of that system, and hopefully stay informed and get information out. Another item is, everybody probably has heard by now, but we were awarded downtown revitalization grants for four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and so we're working through that process at your meeting in December. We look to bring you the actual contract with the state of Nebraska, we'll look to bring you a contract to hire Sin to be the grant administrator, we'll look to bring you a resolution to appoint a committee to review the applications like we did last time. That committee then will make recommendations back to this body, and you will ultimately make decisions as to who has awarded the funds for that downtown revitalization grant. I think if things all go well, we're probably looking at having everybody selected by February, March timeframe, so that will give them an opportunity to start getting contractors lined up, we have got through environmental review process, get all that stuff done, and then we'll have the twenty-two construction cycle, and then based upon the length of the grant, I believe we'll have the twenty-three construction cycle as well, in case it takes that long.
How many applications do you have in the can?
We ended up with fifty-some applications requesting just shy of, I think, five million dollars, and so obviously we'll not be able to fund everybody, so we will have to have the committee sit down and make some recommendations to, you know, how to move forward to some of those. And then the last one I have is, the city has issued an RFQ, a request for qualifications on the Lincoln Street corridor. Again, we're looking to evaluate the corridor from Fifth to Twenty-second Street, and have some recommendations made to us as far as, you know, three lanes, two lanes, parking, no parking, sidewalks, all those types of things. An RFQ is just that, it asks for qualifications from different engineers or firms, they present them to you, we look at and see who do we think would make the best fit on making some recommendations. Generally, there's a committee kind of forum that interviews those individuals that come in, makes recommendations back to this body for your final approval. That proposal, those proposals are due December third, and so again, you're probably looking at January sometime, by the time you get through the holidays, make sure we've got all the interviews and have somebody selected, then they will come down and conduct some public meetings as well, so make sure we get input from the public as to what they would like to see on that street and that corridor, and then hopefully if all goes well, we bring back a filed design to the council, if you guys approve it, and then we start looking and say, okay, how do we fund this going forward? Is that a block at a time, is it a bond, is it, what other options do we have available to us? And so those will be things that we look at then.
Questions?
Are we done with that? We got questions off the report?
Yeah, questions.
The last thing, the report with the demolitions and the things, I'm a little concerned about the number of inspections that are, we're moving, we're getting them done, but I don't think you're getting, you're going to run out of time, I mean, by the time you get all the inspections done that you want to do, you're going to need to go back and do them again, are we-
Are you talking about the adjoining buildings?
Yeah.
If you remember, I believe they have, if you, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but I thought if you had the inspection done, you're good for three or four years, so it's not an annual inspection.
Right.
But yes, they were trying to line them up to do so many.
You've got, you're at twenty-five percent or thirty percent complete?
I'm pulling up here something.
Two years in?
I thought his number was higher than that.
They've got sixty-two buildings that have been inspected of a hundred and eighteen, so they're about fifty percent roughly is what they've got done.
And you're two years in?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so if you can get the other half done in the next two years, you're going to have to start all over again.
Yes, it'll be a continual process of just kind of working through them on-
That's if you don't run into a snag.
Right.
If you have, if we don't have to go to court, get somebody to let in, I think you're going to run out of time. So my question is, is have we planned for that? I mean-
I mean, the difficult part you have honestly with the adjoining buildings is, when it comes down to working on an adjoining building inspection or a building inspection-
Right.
I tell them to do the building inspection first, right? We're going to keep things moving and keep them moving, go look at the new apartment building, let's get, make sure they keep moving forward. Any adjoining buildings, yes, it gets pushed to the side when those things happen.
Yeah, and part of, and part of the problem is that we haven't had the inspections done, so we end up with the situation we've got on, in the four hundred block court, so I don't know if we need to have a conversation about adding staff, or changing priorities, or what, and I understand that you're the one setting those priorities, but we're the ones collectively as a body that have to answer for it, so I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be setting that priority instead of you.
I'd be happy to listen, if you guys like a different set of priorities, we'll be happy to implement those, so.
Well, yeah, we're not having any conversations about it, so that's why I brought it up, that's why I thought I'd discuss, try to pull it off.
Well, if you've got any ideas, Ted.
I didn't hear you say.
If you've got any ideas, you need to bring those forward, so we can discuss it.
I tried to have that, I asked to have that put on the agenda, so we could have everybody hear, and you didn't want to put it on the agenda, so I'm asking everybody here to think about it.
Sorry, I don't recall that, but-
I'll do it in an email next time, so I have it written down.
That'd be great.
It needs to be addressed, so I just want to let the rest of the council know that they need to give this some thought, because we're going to end up, this is going to end up back on our laps again, because it's not getting done as quickly as it needs to be done. That's all I got.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the Beatrice city council go into closed session at seven thirty-six PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Bilzbach, that we go into executive session at seven thirty-six for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations. And that is approved eight to zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.